I'm happy to announce we have a quorum. Will the meeting please come to order? I want to thank once again the voters, the fire department, the police department, the Department of Public Works, and the Department of Public Health, the Board of Selectmen, and all of the other town officials who have made this extraordinary but getting it to be a little bit more ordinary meeting possible. So, welcome everyone. The field is available on the right, but it looks like we really don't need it. So, I will encourage everyone to find seats up here. And I'd like to continue to use the protocol where you form a line at the microphone. It will expedite things so that you don't have to get up and walk all the way up here being recognized. And also, to tell you the truth, I can't see people all over the place like this very well. And I was missing hands at the Fall Town Meeting, and it was annoying to you and to me too. So, rather than count on me to see your hand waving wildly, if you just form a queue at the microphone, and you will be recognized as you get to the microphone. Okay? So, we are meeting for an annual town meeting pursuant to a warrant produced by the Select Board on the 29th day of April 2020. Has the town been warned of the business before it?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the return of service?
I, Brian Richard, have hereby notified and warned all the inhabitants of the town of West Newbury who qualified to vote at elections in the town affairs to meet outdoors at the bandstand located at Town Annex 379 Main Street at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 22nd, 2021, to act upon and take any other action relative to the articles presented.
There are town employees who are not residents of West Newbury who are with us this morning, who may have information that they can share with us. They include but are not limited to Michael Dwyer, the Fire Chief, Jeff Durand, the Chief of Police, Mike Guti, the Board of Water Commissioners, Christian Kuhn, the Assessor, Maureen Curtin, the Assessor's Clerk, Teresa Woodbury from the Council on Aging, Leah Zambardati, the Planning Director, Stephanie Frontera, the Town Accountant and Business Manager, Wayne Amaral, the Director of the Department of Public Works, Corinne Flaherty, the Director of the G A R Library. Is there any objection to having these people speak if it becomes important?
No.
Okay. So, I will introduce the people here on the podium. I'm the moderator. My name is Casey Swallow. I am the arbiter of the rules of debate. The Town Council and Town Clerk is Michael McCarron, who is sitting at the table behind me on my right. The Select Board is represented by our newest select person, Wendy Reed, and she will be reading all of the motions. She got the short stick. The other Select Board members are Richard Parker, the Chair, and David Archibald, the Vice Chair. The Finance Committee is represented by Gary Roberts, who is the Chair, sitting at this table over here on my right, behind me on my right. And the other members of the Finance Committee are Jessica Nezak, the Vice Chair, Nathan Kelly, the Secretary, Joseph Hayman, and Jim Sparilakis, Angus Jennings's ex officio. The rules of the meeting are as follows. The articles on the warrant constitute the agenda for the meeting, and no business may be brought before the town unless it appears in an article on the warrant. I will read each article, and then, when appropriate, ask for the recommendation of the Finance Committee. The motion, written when possible, must be made before any discussion can take place. A positive motion can be debated, amended, and then voted on by voice-hand or counted vote. And you should all have two cards, one red one and one green one. This is very important because with this venue, seeing hands is not a possibility. So, if you wish to vote for the motion, you would raise your green card when I call for the ayes. And if you wish to vote against the motion, you would raise your red card when I ask for the noes. And please try to remember to take down your card after you voted. And I've announced the vote. A negative motion, which is a motion to take no action, can only be debated as far as whether or not to take action. If the motion passes to take no action, there is no debate on the motion itself. Debate is controlled by the moderator, and you may speak only when recognized by the moderator. Now, I've changed this a little bit. If you are at the microphone and you're the next one in line, consider yourself recognized. But please do not get back in line unless everyone else in the line has had a chance to speak. And if you feel that the question has been exhausted and that it's getting repetitious and et cetera, please refrain from getting back in line. Each speaker must limit his or her remarks to two minutes, and we will maintain a spirit of free and open debate. There will be no personal attacks. Do not address comments to specific individuals. There's no cross-examination. And all questions must be asked through the moderator and directed to the moderator. Only the moderator can ask the opinion of Town Council. If you wish to make a point of order, which supersedes the motion on the floor, you should stand up and shout loudly "point of order" because I won't see you if you're waving your hand at me. Okay? Point of order supersedes the motion on the floor, so you should move to the microphone, and the person who is speaking will yield for the point of order. Finally, it's our custom in West Newbury to avoid motions to call the question. There are several reasons for this. It protects the rights of the minority, who may not have a chance to speak at all if the question's called too early in the debate. The moderator reserves the right to move things along, and you've seen me do it before. So, when I feel like things are getting repetitious and we've had enough debate, I will ask you if you're ready to vote. Finally, for the annual town meeting, Article III is the line item budget. And to move things along, we'll use the same system that we used last spring for the annual town meeting. Rather than reading the whole line and the recommendation of the Finance Committee, I will simply read the number of the line. So, you'll need to follow along in your Finance Committee booklet as to what the line is. If you wish to open debate on a particular line, you need to call loudly again "hold." Once we've gone through the entire line item budget, we will go back and pick up only those lines that have had a hold placed on them where we will have debate. All of the other lines will have passed the Finance Committee recommendation, which is the motion on the floor. And finally, I said this last year, but I think it's important in these interesting times that we live in, to remember that town meeting is the oldest form of local government in the United States. It dates from the 17th century. They actually had trouble getting quorums in the 17th century, and they sent the constables out to get people to come to the town meetings. Our open town meeting in West Newbury is the legislative branch of the town government. Our actions today provide the funding necessary for the selectmen and town manager to run the town, and they will set our tax rate under the restrictions of Proposition 2.5. We exercise our will in town government through the power of the purse. No money can be expended that has not been appropriated by town meeting. At town meeting, we also enact and modify bylaws. So, having gone through that, we will take up the annual town meeting. Article I, to hear and act upon the reports of town officers and committees. I understand there's a report from the Tree Committee?
Ah. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Fred Shenania, Chair of the Tree Committee. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for attending the Arbor Day events that we had, the tree giveaway and the presentations. Second, if you haven't already gotten one, there were some copies of our newsletter that's just coming out, Tree Talk. It's on a table by the entrance, and you can send us an email. So, we have your email address, and we'll put you on an email list. This will be a monthly newsletter about things related to trees and activities. And if you haven't visited our website, we have a plethora of information there. So, I urge you to sign up for the Tree Talk newsletter and to visit the website. And finally, very important, on June 1, or by June 1, we will launch a survey of electronic, and there'll be some paper copies, to find out what the town would like the Tree Committee to prioritize over the next year or two. It's really important that you give us this feedback so that we know what you want. So, please stay alert. There'll be an email blast with a link to the survey. So, please take it. And the deadline for submitting your responses is June 15. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
The next report is from the Board of Health.
Madam Moderator, I would like to take a couple of minutes to publicly thank a few people for their work with the COVID pandemic. First, Paul Sivigni, our health agent, who has worked on the pandemic since day one. There wasn't a day that he was not in a conference call with the State Board of Public Health, the health nurse, the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, the schools, the Board of Health members to keep us up to date. He has given up every weekend since this thing started to make sure everybody will work on the vaccination clinics in both West Newbury and Amesbury. Second, Diane Daddino, our public health nurse. Who worked with the Council on Aging Director, Teresa Woodbury, checking on her senior citizens. She did more contract tracing than anybody knows. She's also worked closely with the school district, and she has also given up her weekends to be at all the vaccine clinics. Kathy Mandeville, Assistant to our public health nurse, who gave up a lot of her time and energy for this effort. Jane Crafton. Jane Crafton, our Board of Health Assistant, who spent hours, most of it on her own time and from home, setting up appointments for the residents to get their shots. Erin Rich, the volunteer coordinator who set up shifts for receptionists, parking, traffic control. That was probably the hardest job of anybody that had to be done. Blake Seal and his wife Carol, who gave up most of their weekends to be at all the flu clinics in one capacity or another. Tom Fahy, who's also a member of the Board of Health, who works in the -- he's a pharmacist. He would go to Beverly, where he works, pick up all the vaccines, and bring them to Amesbury for the clinic, and he would also draw the syringes and help administer. The West Newbury Police Department, they did traffic duty in front of the Page School on weekends, and the clinics were there. The West Newbury Fire Department had first responders inside in case of medical emergencies. The Highway Department set up the signboards, lighting, and traffic cones. If there is any other group or individual that I have forgotten, my apologies, and I would like to sincerely thank you at this time. One more thing, the town of West Newbury is at this moment, or as of March 4th, or May 4th, is 86% vaccinated.
Thank you for the reports. As you know, we have two meetings scheduled for today. We have this annual town meeting. We also have a special town meeting. So, at this point, I'm going to adjourn the --
Can we do citizen of the year?
Oh, I'm sorry you didn't tell me you had another report. We have another report. So, forget what I just said.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, each year, the town recognizes one particular citizen who we feel represents community spirit and has made huge contributions to the community and the town government over the past year or past number of years. And in this case, it's somebody who has only lived in town for, I don't know, 10 or 12 years, and yet she has made an incredible, or created an incredible footprint in the time that she's been here. She's been on the FinCom, was the lead person in the town's MVP process. MVP is Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, which has since spawned the Climate Change Resiliency Committee, which she chairs. She's been on the Energy Committee, which is now the Energy and Sustainability Committee. She has been a note taker for the ConCom. She's very active in the garden club. You'll see her driving around town ordering flowers that have been put out. She's made huge contributions to the town website in keeping multiple committees' pages up to date and looking clean and intelligible. She has been very generous from a community contribution standpoint through the food pantry. And I guess I'd like to recognize Elisa Grammer as our Citizen of the Year. I'm hoping Elisa's here because I don't see her yet. Oh, there she is. Great.
No, just, it's on, it's on her head. Same as ever. I should take it home. Thank you.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other reports at this time? We always keep this article open for the duration of the meeting in case there is another report that someone wishes to make before a specific article, and we'll do that this time. And now, we'll adjourn this annual town meeting and take up the special town meeting. So, without further ado, Article I, to hear and act upon the reports of town officers and committees. Are there any reports for the special town meeting? Seeing none. Article II, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $33,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to the repair and replacement of the fire alarm system at the John C. Page School Building, or to take any other action thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee was unanimous in its support of this article.
Ms. Reed.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $33,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to the repair and replacement of the fire alarm system at the John C. Page School Building. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the Capital Stabilization Fund at the close of fiscal year 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
This motion requires a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion? If not, all those opposed, please raise your cards. Opposed first. All those in favor, please raise your cards. It's unanimous in favor. Article II, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, oops, sorry, from Community Preservation Act funds, the sum of $104,850 for all costs and expenses pertaining to the repair, restoration, and preservation of the West Newbury Town Hall, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee was unanimous in its support of this article.
I move that the town transfer from Community Preservation Act funds, undesignated fund balance, the sum of $104,850 for all costs and expenses pertaining to the repair, restoration, and preservation of the West Newbury Town Hall. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the Community Preservation Act, undesignated fund balance, at the close of fiscal year 2023.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. It's unanimous. Article IV, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act funds, the sum of $30,000 for costs and expenses pertaining to the design and construction of an all-access trail, commonly referred to as the Wetstone Greenway, proposed to be located between River Meadow Drive and Sullivan's Court Extension, or take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee was unanimous in its support of this article.
Ms. Reed. Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from Community Preservation Act funds, undesignated fund balance, the sum of $30,000 for costs and expenses pertaining to the design and construction of an all-access trail, commonly referred to as the Wetstone Greenway, proposed to be located between River Meadow Drive and Sullivan's Court Extension. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the Community Preservation Act, undesignated fund balance, at the close of fiscal year 2023.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Red cards, I'm sorry. The ayes have it. Article V, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $74,022 to fund the fiscal year 2021 snow and ice deficit. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, in a split vote with three in favor and one opposed, the Finance Committee supports passage of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $74,022 to fund the fiscal year 2021 snow and ice deficit.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The ayes have it. Article VI, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $3,137 to fund the Essex Agricultural and Technical High School fiscal year 2021 budget deficit. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $3,137 to fund the Essex Agricultural and Technical High School fiscal year 2021 budget deficit.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article VII, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $287.57 to resolve a deficit resulting from the over expenditure of funds from the World War II Jim Stabilization Fund that occurred in fiscal year 2016. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimous in support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $287.57 to resolve a deficit resulting from the over expenditure of funds from the World War II Jim Stabilization Fund that occurred in fiscal year 2016.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Since this involves a debt from previous year, it requires a nine-tenths vote. Will all those who are opposed to this motion, please raise your red cards? All those in favor, please raise your green cards. It's unanimous. Article VIII, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $3,948.03 to resolve deficits for expired grants that did not close out properly in fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimous in support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $3,948.03 to resolve deficits for expired grants that did not close out properly in fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019.
Is there any discussion? This only requires a majority. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article IX, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $100,000 to fund unbudgeted costs associated with the operation and administration of public health clinics to administer the COVID-19 vaccine, or take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $100,000 to fund unbudgeted costs associated with the operation and administration of public health clinics to administer the COVID-19 vaccine.
Is there any discussion? Is a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The ayes have it. Article X, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $90,000 to fund unbudgeted personnel costs, or take any action related thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimous in support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $90,000 to fund unbudgeted personnel costs.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The ayes have it. Article XI, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $18,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to the replacement of the Public Safety Network server. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee was unanimous in support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $18,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to the replacement of the Public Safety Network server. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the general account fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article XII, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $15,000 to find consulting support toward compliance with a stormwater management permit issued to the town of West Newbury by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, or to take any other action related thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimous in support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $15,000 to fund consulting support toward compliance with the stormwater management permit issued to the town of West Newbury by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the general account at the close of fiscal year 2022.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $9,050 to fund costs related to the Assessing Department Network Server. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee is unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $9,050 to fund all costs related to the Assessing Department Network Server. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the general account at the close of fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $8,500 to fund the costs to conduct a utility property revaluation analysis and report in accordance with updated methodology approved by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue for the valuation of utilities. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $5,500 to fund all costs and expenses related to a utility property reevaluation analysis and report. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the general account at the close of fiscal year 2022.
Is there any, is a second? I will, I will address that. The motion is what we vote on, not the article. As long as the motion is within the bounds of the article, it is acceptable. So the motion is to appropriate $5,500. Mr. Baker.
Madam Moderator, why has this been reduced from $8,500? That was the request to the Board of Assessors.
So how do we change them?
Why don't you make a motion to change, to amend it?
I move that we amend the amount to $8,500, which is the price that we have been quoted by the vendor to do this.
Motion on the floor is a motion to amend, to correct what appears to have been a mistake. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Motion is amended. Motion on the floor is to appropriate $8,500 to fund the utility property reevaluation analysis. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. It's unanimous. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $7,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to identifying, mapping, and remediating invasive species on public lands in the town of West Newbury, or take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee was split on this article, so makes no recommendation.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town take no action on this article.
Please recall that taking no action means there will be no debate on the article. Is there any discussion on the motion to take no action?
Yeah, Madam Moderator, I'd just like to explain why, why there's a motion for no action.
Okay.
And although in general, I think this is a really important article and an important thing for us to address, probably most of us are aware of some of the invasive plants that are, that are present in, in West Newbury and throughout the Commonwealth. You know, we're all familiar, we've probably all been, been stabbed a few times by multiflora rose, at least if we spend time outside poking around in a garden or the edge of our yard. We've seen bittersweet vines climbing trees and ultimately tearing the trees down. Those are just a couple of probably two dozen different invasive species that have a footprint of some degree in town. And, you know, the goal is to begin to understand and quantify and come up with control strategies for some of the invasives, particularly ones that have limited footprint so far. And it was decided, though, that we really didn't quite have our ducks in a row as far as this article was concerned and how interns were going to be supervised. The article was, by the way, to support a couple of interns for the summer. We, we didn't have a good supervisory structure figured out. And we, we also were off on timing. In order to be able to access the best pool of potential candidates for a job like, like this or for internships like this, you really need to be advertising in the late winter. You know, say February, March timeframe. And obviously, that's in the rearview mirror right now. So the expectation is we're going to come back in the fall with a revised, somewhat revised article for the same purposes, and the funds will be available for next year. So, thanks.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to take no action, so we'll have to limit the discussion to no action. Is there any discussion on taking no action? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes have it. Article 15. No, that was Article 15. We have reached the end of the special town meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn the town meeting, special town meeting?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the eyes have it, and we are adjourned on the special town meeting. And we will return to the annual town meeting and take it up with Article two. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $397,325 from the school stabilization fund to pay a portion of the town share of debt service associated with the building of the new middle high school. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee is unanimous in support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $397,325 from the school stabilization fund to pay a portion of the town's share of debt service associated with the building of the new middle and high school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Because this involves taking money from the stabilization fund, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those opposed to this motion, please raise your red card. All those in favor, please raise your green card. It's unanimous. Article three is the line item budget. Excuse me. I hope it's not sitting on my desk at home, but I can get another copy. Yeah, just give me a copy. I don't know what I. Sorry. So as I, as I mentioned in my introductory remarks, I'm only going to read the line and the appropriate body of government. So please shout loudly "hold" if you wish to discuss any of these lines. The motion on the floor is the Finance Committee recommendation. If you wish to discuss one, you shout "hold," and we'll go back and take it up. Okay? Line one, moderator. Line two, select board. Line three, town manager. Line four, finance committee. Line five, assessing department. Line six, finance department. Line seven, special counsel. Line eight, town clerk, town council. Line nine, board of registrars' elections. Line 10, conservation commission. Line 11, planning board. Line 12, board of appeals. Line 13, open space committee. Line 14, cable advisory committee. Line 15, police department. Line 16, fire department. Line 17, ambulance service. Line 18, inspection department. Line 19, emergency management agency. Line 20, animal control officer. Line 21, harbor master. Line 22, public safety dispatch. Line 23, Penn Tucket.
Hold.
Line 24, Whittier. Line 25, Essex North Shore Agricultural. Line 26, whoops. Line, oh, that was line 25 was Essex. Line 26, Department of Public Works. Line 27, Board of Health. Line 28, Council on Aging. Line 29, Veterans. Line 30, Library. Line 31, Recreation. Line 32, Mill Pond Operating Expenses. Line 33, Bandstand. Line 34, Historical Commission. Line 35, Cultural Council. Line 36, Debt Service. Line 37, Essex County Retirement Fund. Line 38, Unemployment Compensation. Line 39, Employees' Health Insurance. Line 40, Medicare Insurance. Line 41, Other Post-Employment Benefits. Line 42, Insurance and Bonds. Well, this is interesting. I don't see a line 43. Line 44, Transfers Out Capital Stabilization. And that is the end of the line item budget. So we will go back and pick up the hold. On line 23, Penn Tucket. The motion on the floor for each of the separate sections of line 23 is the Finance Committee recommendation. Penn Tucket Regional School Assessment, $7,336,342. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
What, what are we on?
Penn, Penn Tucket.
We're on line, we're on section 23, and it's, it's all one thing, so I have to read them separately.
Okay, we support. Okay. We recommend approval.
Recommend appro-
Yeah.
Finance Committee recommends approval. The motion's on the floor. Is there discuss, uh, is there a second?
I didn't think you needed me.
She doesn't have to read it. The motion's the Finance Committee recommendation.
Okay, two seconds.
Okay. Is there a discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your green card, or your red cards. It's unanimous. The second line under Penn Tucket, under Penn Tucket, Penn Tucket Capital Assessment, the recommendation on the floor is the Finance Committee recommendation, $859,246.
Second.
Okay, that's the motion on the floor. Second. Is there a discussion? Mr. Archibald. Ms. Reed.
Yep. So am I making the contrary motion or explaining why it's changing?
If you wanted to make a different motion, make the contrary motion.
Okay, I move to reduce the fiscal year 22 Penn Tucket Capital Assessment from $859,246 to $799,231.
Second.
Discussion.
If I can explain, we recently received a letter from the superintendent stating that they learned the next phase of borrowing for the middle high school project had a lower interest rate than Penn Tucket had anticipated when they voted our FY '22 assessment. As a result, on May 18th, the school committee voted an updated assessment that is $60,015 less than included in the proposed FY '22 operating budget.
Mr. Archibald.
This is, this is really good, really good news because it's not only just this year. This is for, for bonding, so we're going to be saving $60,000 on the whole length of the bond, not just this year.
Which is 30, 30 years, right?
Thirty years.
Any further discussion? So we're voting on the proposed amendment, which is now the motion on the floor. Okay? So the proposed amendment is to reduce the amount to $799,231. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. And now the motion on the floor is to appropriate $799,231. All those in favor, raise your green cards. All those opposed, raise your red cards. That's unanimous. And the next motion on the floor is the Finance Committee recommendation for Penn Tucket Assessment, page, page, phase two. The motion on the floor is to appropriate $493,338. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee's in support of this number.
Okay, is there a change? No change? Okay. All those in favor of appropriating $493,338, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. It's unanimous. That was the only hold that I heard. Was there any other hold? If not, we'll move on to Article four.
Do we need to vote on, like, do we need to vote on the overall budget? Is there any?
In accordance with the provision-
Madam Moderator? You made a motion on the overall budget.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. We, we should have passed a motion closing it out on the overall budget, so we'll do that.
Madam Moderator, I move that the amounts of money set forth in the printed report of the Finance Committee for the omnibus budget be appropriated as amended hereby for the several purposes therein itemized, each numbered item being considered as a separate appropriation, and that the same be expended only for such purposes.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. And my favorite article, Article four. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 38 of the Acts of 1936, to see what instructions, rules, and regulations the town may wish to impose on the Board of Water Commissioners.
Madam Moderator, I move that the Board of Water Commissioners be instructed that prior to the setting of the rates for the supply of water to its resident customers, that the Board of Water Commissioners hold a public hearing advertised at least 14 days in advance in a local newspaper, in which the methodology for the determination of water rates be discussed.
Second.
Discussion. Do you want to speak to it? No? Is there any discussion on this motion? There is actually a motion.
Archie, do you want to?
Okay. If no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your card, your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate an anticipation- "To see if the town will vote to appropriate in anticipation of Water Department revenue the sum of $863,649, of which $280,038 for salaries and wages, which include $1,700 for Water Commissioner's stipends, $47,248 for insurances, $339,399 for expenses, $124,068 for debt service, $20,000 for extraordinary and unforeseen expenses, and $52,896 for indirect costs, or take any other action related thereto." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is in favor of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate in anticipation of Water Department revenue the sum of $863,649, of which $280,038 for salaries and wages, which include a $1,700 for Water Commissioner's stipends, $47,248 for insurances, $339,399 for expenses, $124,068 for debt service, $20,000 for extraordinary and unforeseen expenses, and $52,896 for indirect costs.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Article 6. "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $500,000 to be placed in the Water Stabilization Fund in order to fund a capital, in order to fund capital expenditures for water-related projects, or take any other action related thereto." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, in a split vote with three in favor and two opposed, the Finance Committee supports passage of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Department free cash the sum of $500,000 to be placed in the Water Capital Stabilization Fund in order to fund capital expenditures for water-related projects.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. It's unanimous.
There's a couple of red.
Oh, okay. If you're raising a red card on these motions that are overwhelmingly one way or the other, would you please stand up so that I make sure I see you? It's hard to see against the backdrop of the trees and the cars and, you know, I'm scanning and I just didn't see you, I'm sorry. So it's, the motion passes. Article 7. "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $270,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to improvements to the Pipe Stave Hill Water Tank." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee unanimously, unanimously supports passage of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Department free cash the sum of $270,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to improvements to the Pipe Stave Hill Water Tank. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the Water Capital Stabilization Fund at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 8. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $76,261 for the Pension Liability Stabilization Fund, or take any other action relative thereto." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $76,261 into the Pension Liability Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 9. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $15,000 for the other Post-Employment Benefits Stabilization Fund, or to take any other action related thereto." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee was unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 into the other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 10. "To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $10,363 from the septic loan revolving account for the repayment of debt service." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimous in its support of the passage of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $10,363 from the septic loan revolving account for the repayment of debt service.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 11. "To see if the town will vote to allocate and/or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2022, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation, or take any other action related thereto. Appropriate $28,704 from fiscal year 2022 estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses. Reserve $57,408 from fiscal year 2022 estimated revenues for community housing reserve. Reserve $57,408 from fiscal year 2022 estimated revenues for historic resources reserve. Reserve $57,408 from fiscal year 2022 estimated revenues for open space and recreation reserve. Reserve $373,160 from fiscal year 2022 estimated revenues for budgeted reserve." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee was unanimously in support of passage of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to allocate, appropriate, and reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues, the amounts set forth in Article 11 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. It's unanimous. Article 12. "To see if the town will vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds the sum of $25,000 to conduct an historic sites survey, or take any other action relative thereto." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds, Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of $25,000 to conduct a historic sites survey. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the Community Preservation Act Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, at the close of fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. The eyes have it. Article 13. "To see if the town will vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds, Open Space and Recreation Reserve, the sum of $30,000 for costs and expenses pertaining to the design of an all-access trail and associated features at the Mill Pond, or take any other action related thereto." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously supports the passage of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds, Open Space and Recreation Reserve, the sum of $30,000 for costs and expenses pertaining to the design of an all-access trail and associated features at the Mill Pond. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the Community Preservation Act Funds, Open Space and Recreation Reserve, at the close of fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Parker.
So there is currently a grant application out for an additional $30,000. And I can't recall what state agency that grant request is to.
Mass Trails.
Mass Trails, okay. So in the event that that comes in, there, this would, there would then be $60,000 available, assuming this article is passed, for the trail. $30,000 gets us to a certain point in evaluation and design. $60,000 gets us farther along that process. This does not fund the construction of the, the all-access trail, but it, you know, begins the process of, of assessing the site and, and design. And I don't know if, I think Brad Boucher, not to put you on the spot, if you're out there somewhere, you, you may have something more to say. If not, that's great, but.
He said no.
Madam Moderator, I'm John Dodge. I chair the Open Space Committee. On the proposed all-access trail at Mill Pond will fulfill a critical gap in the town's trail system. None of the 40 miles of trails in town are designed to meet or exceed Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. The need is clear. Residents 65 and older are projected to increase from 13.6% to 37, to 33.7% of the town's population by 2035, according to the West Newbury Housing Production Plan. I think there's a commensurate drop with the younger population, which tends to be more mobile. Oh, did the, did this just come on?
Turned it up.
Anyway, implementing this project is a priority for the Open Space Committee, the Mill Pond Committee, and the Select Board, so please support Article 13. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes have it. Article 14. "To see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, the sum of $175,000 to purchase the following. Number 1, a conservation restriction on approximately 30 acres of real estate located to the rear of property located at 28 Coffin Street, being generally described on West Newbury Assessors Map 23 as Lot 4. And 2, a conservation restriction in conjunction with Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., on two parcels of real estate located to the rear of the property located at 28 Coffin Street, being generally described as West New, on West Newbury Assessors Map 23 as lots 11 and 12, consisting of approximately 11 acres and 10 acres respectively, said purchases to be subject to approval of the conservation restrictions by all parties, and that the Board of Selectmen is to be authorized to execute, acknowledge, and deliver all grants, agreements, and such other instruments, including but not limited to the conservation restrictions in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 184, and any other applicable statute or regulation as may be necessary on behalf of the Town of West Newbury to effectuate the purchases herein mentioned, and to take any other action relative thereto." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, in a split vote with three in favor and two opposed, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of $175,000 to purchase the following. 1, a conservation restriction on approximately 30 acres of real estate located to the rear of the property located at 28 Coffin Street, being generally described on West Newbury Assessors Map 23 as Lot 4. And 2, a conservation restriction in conjunction with Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., on two parcels of real estate located to the rear of the property located at 28 Coffin Street, being generally described on West Newbury Assessors Map 23 as lots 11 and 12, consisting of approximately 11 acres and 10 acres respectively. Said purchases to be subject to approval of the conservation restriction by all parties, and that the Board of Selectmen is to be authorized to execute, acknowledge, and deliver all grants, agreements, and such other instruments, including but not limited to the conservation restrictions in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 184, and any other applicable statute or regulation, as may be necessary on behalf of the Town of West Newbury to effectuate the purchases herein mentioned.
Second.
We have a representative from the Essex County Green Belt, Vanessa Johnson Hall, who is not a resident of West Newbury, and she would like to address the town. Is there any objection?
No.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Vanessa Johnson Hall, the Assistant Director of Land Conservation at Essex County Green Belt Association. For those of you who don't know us, Green Belt has worked for 60 years with private landowners and municipalities throughout Essex County to preserve open space. Late last year, Green Belt and the town were contacted about the opportunity to protect approximately 50 acres off of Coffin and Main Street. In close consultation with the town, including the Select Board and the Open Space Committee, we negotiated an agreement to purchase the 30 acres that were offered for acquisition and the 20 acres that were offered as a conservation restriction for $250,000. Negotiating a conservation purchase is always a balance between maximizing public benefit and minimizing public cost. With regards to cost, on behalf of the town and Green Belt, Green Belt contracted with an independent appraiser to value the property, and the conclusion was that the market value of the property was over half a million dollars. That means that the $250,000 purchase price represents a sale at half of market value. The 30 acres that would be preserved would eliminate three house lots, and the 20 acres in conservation restriction would eliminate up to two house lots. The town's share of the purchase price is $175,000. Green Belt will match the, with $75,000 in privately raised funds, and we are covering all transaction costs, which, as anyone who's ever hired contractors or attorneys knows, can add up. Benefits. So what do you, the residents of West Newbury, get for $175,000? This is an important puzzle piece to expanding publicly accessible open space in West Newbury. It would create a contiguous block of conserved land from Riverbend Conservation Area to the Long Hill Orchard Agricultural Preservation Restriction. It buys you, the public, the right to access the entire 50 acres on public trails that will be created and maintained by Green Belt. These new trails would expand the trail system from Riverbend Conservation Area to a public ECTA trail on River Run, River Run Farm. These 50 acres also preserve important wildlife habitat and climate resilience by keeping forests and wetlands intact. Opportunities to preserve any one parcel of land are few and far between. This is a crucial connector for both public trails and for creating a contiguous wildlife corridor in this area of town. We like to take the long-term view, knowing that if we work together to preserve these 50 acres now, they're still going to be protected 50 years, 100 years, 200 years from now, with public trails that might even link up to more protected open space. We're grateful for all of our open space partnerships with the town to date and hope this will add to our collaborative success to preserve West Newbury's open spaces. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone ask to, with, Ms. Archibald?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to add a few comments to the, the, first of all, we didn't get the appraisal on this property until very, very late in the process, one day before the CPC Committee was able to, had their meeting on, on the thing. And we, so the appraisal, to me, the best appraisal of a, of a piece of property is what it sold for. And this particular parcel of property has been on the market for approximately 10 years, and it, it sold this, in 2021 for $810,000. So that the conservation restriction on the 50 acres that the town would be acquiring, that is 50 out of the 72 acres of the, of the total parcel. So I have literally back-of-the-envelope calculations that I, I did this morning. So the- calculations that I did this morning. So the percentage of... So if the total parcel sold for $810,000, that... And the town would be acquiring a conservation restriction on 50, 70 seconds of that property, that would come out to 561,000. But my research shows that landlocked properties traditionally all over the United States sell at approximately one-fifth to one... Just about one-fifth of the normal price of the property. In this case, the 50 acres that the conservation restriction would be on are on the least desirable part of the 72-acre parcel. They are hilly, parts of it are under high-tension wires, and parts of it are wetlands. So basically, if you take 20%, one-fifth of the 561,000, my numbers come out to 112,000 would be the price of this particular property. I'm completely in favor of the town acquiring it, just that we weren't really... The town wasn't really involved in coming up with the... The price was sort of set right at the very... In the beginning, the town wasn't involved in negotiating the price, and I just think that the price is too high.
Mr. Dodge, if others wish to... Yeah, come. If others wish to speak on this, would you sort of make your way to the microphone so we can avoid a lot of delay?
Thank you, Member of the Select Board, Archibald. I think using a national figure for backlands is pretty erroneous. You can't compare Wyoming and Montana with Massachusetts, where land values are sky-high. So I would have much more faith in the professional appraisal than I would sort of looking nationally. Everybody knows that land in West Newbury goes for much more than what we're asking for here. $250,000 to protect 51 acres. If you just leave it at that, that is a terrific deal for the town. And basically, what Green Belt is giving us is a $75,000 gift to help pay for this, and then they will maintain it and build the trails. I can't see how this is anything but an absolutely terrific deal for the town. Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Hi, folks. I've been on the Planning Board for some time, but I'm speaking not as a member of the Planning Board, just somebody who is perhaps more informed because I've seen things come and go in front of the Planning Board. And if you look at this piece of land, there is the potential here... And I'm not saying that it's a done deal, but there is a potential here for creating sort of a great ring trail that would not involve any highway sections at all, that would allow people to go from, well, from Mill Pond, north through Riverbend Conservation, and then west through this piece of property, a significant portion of it, and then perhaps across River Run and then Long Hill Farm, and then come forward to some new public trails, which are in process, that would take you around back to the backside of the town forest in Mill Pond again. This sort of this great ring forest and prairie trail that would be open to our kids and our grandkids. Opportunities don't come around very often for something like this. Maybe the dollars aren't exactly where we want them to be, but the fact that this is an opportunity available to us now is... It's incredible to me. And, you know, I don't know if my kids are going to end up in West Newbury. They're young adults now. But I'm not thinking about my family or my kids. I'm thinking about future families of West Newbury, and this is a rare opportunity, and I strongly support this. I think we should take this while we have this chance.
Hi, I'm Danny Carlat, Old Wharf Road. I just wanted to remind everybody some of the history of this parcel, which is that it was essentially about to be developed by Chip Hall and Cottage Hall Associates in order to build what was originally slated to be 152 units, I believe, on 72 acres of land. And then that was whittled down to 90 units. So that would have placed a huge strain on the, you know, the resources, the infrastructure of West Newbury, and would have destroyed some really beautiful, pristine forest lands. So one of the things in the back of our mind, I think, that we should be thinking about is that not only will this create, as the previous speaker said, an amazing new trail system that's contiguous with other open space that we already have. So it's a piece of an amazing... It's a piece of the puzzle that would make for a beautiful trail system. But it would also prevent the kind of hostile Section 40B development that we basically dodged a bullet. Someone on the council said we dodged a missile by having that developer pull out for various reasons at the last minute, partly because of so much community opposition to that project. So we were able to luck out to have the developer pull out of that project, and now we have the double opportunity of being able to work with Essex County Green Belt to pay only $175,000 to protect over 50 acres and create a trail system for future generations.
Jean Lambert, River Road. I am also a member of the Open Space Committee, but I'm speaking both as a resident and Open Space Committee member. Two brief points. I have been instrumental in doing the open space surveys that we need to do for the open space plans. I've done the last three of them, pretty much, and in every survey, rural quality tops the list. That's what people want. That's why they move to West Newbury. So here's an opportunity to improve our rural quality once again, so I urge you to vote for this. Secondly, as for the discrepancy around... Or not discrepancy, but the question around the price, I have worked with Green Belt and in particular Vanessa Johnson Hall for decades now, and have found her to be a very thorough and thoughtful person in researching prices and getting the best price. And I think this $175,000 price tag is a deal, especially since Green Belt's going to construct and manage everything, and we get the benefit. We get the improved rural quality. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. The eyes have it. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $700,000 into the capital stabilization fund, or take any other action related thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $700,000 into the capital stabilization fund.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. It's unanimous. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $600,000 for costs and expenses pertaining to the town's share for the reconstruction of the Middle Street Bridge, or take any other action related thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the capital stabilization fund the sum of $600,000 for costs and expenses pertaining to the town's share for the reconstruction of the Middle Street Bridge. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the capital stabilization fund at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator, so several weeks ago, we learned that current projections of cost on the Middle Street Bridge will be higher than had originally been expected. And, you know, without going into too much background there, we could all imagine what's going on economically and how costs are changing for different products and services. So originally, it was thought that the $600,000 was going to be sufficient for the town's additional contribution to the overall bridge project. We now know that that's probably not the case, and we will probably, at some point in the future, have to come back to approve additional funds. By approving these funds now and moving them into capital stabilization, or, you know, by approving this now, we're not tying our hands relative to these funds at some point in the future. You know, should crazy numbers come back when the bridge is bid out and we don't approve future dollars? So, you know, I think it's to understand that what we're doing at this point most likely is partially funding, the substantial part, but nonetheless, partially... Only partially funding what the town's contribution will be to complete the reconstruction or the replacement of the Middle Street Bridge. And I just think it's important that everybody realize that, you know, just for the sake of full disclosure. Thanks.
Further discussion?
Okay. Yeah, I guess Selectmen and Archibald just pointed out that, you know, this can be applied to other projects if need be. So again, as I said earlier, it's not stranded only for the Middle Street Bridge project.
I have a number of questions on this, and I haven't decided which side of the bridge I'm on. But I'm wondering, we do have to ask the question, do we need this bridge? And I think the cost now is 3.5 million. That's the last figure I saw.
Can you raise the microphone?
Says it's on. Okay. I just think we need to ask the question, do we need this bridge? And if we don't... If we decide we don't need it, what should it be? Because it can't stay in its current state. I mean, it's falling apart. I mean, how much would it cost to build a pedestrian bridge in a place where people can fish and people drive over it on their bikes? But I just want to ask that question. My second question, I saw a quote in the newspaper that I think it was, "I hope Newbury Port doesn't pull out." And if they... You know, how solid are they on ponying up their contribution? Those are my questions.
You going to answer the questions?
To a couple of those questions. Newbury Port is... I guess I can say this publicly, is not totally on board with the project right at the moment. But however, there is a couple of things we have to consider to... The town received a Department of Transportation grant in the amount of a million dollars to assist with the financing of this bridge, and that was under the idea that we were building a bridge that would carry automobiles and trucks and so forth. And so we haven't... Because this is all sort of in flux at the moment, there's no way that we've been able to determine, you know, what would happen if we decided... And it's certainly a possibility. I would get to the point where the bridge is too expensive, too, that I don't think we need to go there. At a certain point, it becomes... It just becomes way too expensive. So the issue would be from the Department of Transportation, would we have to give the million dollars back if we don't make it a bridge that automobiles and trucks can go over? So that's something we'd have to explore. And so there's a lot of things in flux. The idea, I think, behind this is that we keep the project, at least the design phase of the project, going. And so, in other words, we have a fully theoretical shovel-ready project. And if the federal government does come up with a new big infrastructure funding plan, this would certainly... Where... This is certainly something that's a big infrastructure project. We would have all the engineering and everything literally ready, set to go. So our feeling is that we can at least keep the design phase of the project going at the moment. That doesn't... It seems like a good idea, because perhaps we can get additional funding from the federal government or somewhere else. That's certainly something that we have to think about. But the costs are escalating because material costs are going up, contractors are very busy, so they don't have to come in with low bids now to get a job. A lot of things are contributing to the increased costs. The other factor is that... We knew this all along, but it just adds such a layer of complexity. We're building a bridge over a reservoir. So the amount of protections that are... Maybe weren't there when the bridge was built, you know, a long time ago, that need to be put in now significantly add to the cost more than if it was on a stream, say, that... Over a stream that was not a reservoir. So that also adds to the complexity. But, Mr. Dodge, your point is well taken. At a certain point, maybe we have to decide, does this become a pedestrian bridge or a pedestrian bicycle bridge? That's certainly a possibility.
Hello, Jordy Vining on Garden Street. I wanted to underline, I guess, some of these points. As John Dodge was talking about, I do think that it's warranted to have a public discussion and so forth about what the need is for this bridge as a vehicular bridge. I used to drive over this bridge all the time to get to Newbury Port. I have no problems driving on Indian Hill Street or on Main Street to get to Newbury Port. Perhaps there's issues with emergency services, but there... I think there's... I certainly appreciate the complexities with Newbury Port as the partner and with MassDOT's grant and so forth. MassDOT does provide grants for pedestrian and bicycle bridges only as well, and is certainly more and more supportive of those types of projects these days. And so my comment in question would be, as we approve funds for this type of project, knowing that we don't know the end result, whether the design process can potentially be adapted to accommodate different alternatives. A pedestrian and bicycle bridge is a much simpler affair and a much less costly approach to providing that linkage. And I see every week how much that space is enjoyed by people who want to bike and want to bicycle and fish and everything else along that whole corridor. And it's been actually a very valued space over the past few years while that bridge has been out, out of service for vehicles. Thank you.
Mr. Cook.
Madam Moderator, Ray Cook, Six Bailey's Lane. Two points. One, if we have all the plans ready and it's shovel-ready, it's much more likely it will be built before we have a chance to reconsider. And second, we live in the days of ways. And so a lot of people who aren't West Newbury residents will find this bridge if it's opened back up to traffic, and it could have potentially a negative effect on the rural character of West Newbury. So I propose that we not spend this money and that we go for the pedestrian bicycle bridge route. I think it's better for the community and overall better for the environment.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So responding to one or two of the questions that were posed earlier, as far as whether or not we need the bridge as an auto bridge, based on the numbers that I've heard and perhaps the DPW director could corroborate my recollection, the bridge historically has handled 800 to 1,200 cars a day. And so how do you value that? You know, that's when people aren't taking that bridge with a car, they're pushed off to some other street. They're either on Main Street, or they're pushed on to Rogers Street to do an end run around the closed bridge, you know, Garden Street to Rogers to Turkey Hill. And by the way, when I see you're over there, if I'm wrong on that 800 to 1,200 that are okay, thumbs up on that. So strikes me, that's a reasonably significant number of cars being pushed onto other roads. You know, I could speak for myself as someone who lives in the southwestern quadrant of town, and this is my primary access, historically, to Newburyport. And, you know, maybe not everybody goes to Newburyport. Obviously, people live in other parts of town, and the bridge seems insignificant to them. But, you know, there is some portion of the town for which this is really the primary means of access to Newburyport, or at least to downtown Newburyport. You know, so, you know, I guess your perspective on the bridge is going to vary considerably depending upon where you're located and what your historical use has been. And there's also an issue of alternative or emergency access. So, you know, currently, if something were to happen on Route 113, you know, Main Street, and Main Street were shut down, how would we get to Newburyport? We wouldn't take the Middle Street Bridge. I guess everybody would be on Rogers Street? And maybe people think that's far-fetched, that something would happen that Main Street could be shut down. But things like that happen. And, well, I'll just leave it at that, I guess. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Linda Connors, and I live at 442 Middle Street, right next to the bridge. So we look out at the bridge. In all the years we've been there, we have never seen an ambulance go over that bridge. Also, we actually saw the truck that broke the camel's back. We saw the tractor-trailer truck go over, and that was that. And there had been increasingly amount of tractor-trailer trucks going over, because the GPS from 495 to the industrial park, that's the way they go. And it's just, it's too much heavy traffic going over that bridge. So...
I'm Rich Baker from 288 Middle Street. If the bridge were to reopen, it would increase the traffic in front of my house. But we need to allow access to this town. If you look at the town of West Newbury, I think I counted 10 or 12 different accesses to this town, and half of them have been closed down over the years. Georgetown Road no longer goes through. Emery Lane never goes, no longer goes through than Newburyport. Crane Neck no longer goes through. And there's others, if I sat down and looked at the map. Ash Street, sometimes it's open, sometimes it's not. Middle Street is just another access to the town. We're shutting off all access to the town, limiting everything down just to Route 113. And if 113 were to be closed, you know, for a single-house fire will do that, an auto accident will do that. There's no way to get to Newburyport to get people to the hospital in Inner Jakes, except going the long way around through Rogers Street. We shouldn't be putting traffic on other people's roads. We should open up as many of the accesses to the town and balance it out. We need this Middle Street Bridge. I've seen the ambulances go by my house, heading over that bridge before it was closed, and from my house, from all of my neighbors and anybody on the south side of town. That's the best way to get to Inner Jakes. We need this bridge open, and I urge you to fund this article.
Hi, Kurt Umholz, Middle Street. I also have experience personally with an ambulance ride across that bridge. So it does happen, and I was grateful for it. In addition to that, if I understand correctly, this money isn't being dedicated to be spent in whole, and it would just show our commitment to pursuing a project if it were to happen. So I know there was question about, well, is Newburyport all in on this or not? It's hard for them to be all in if they don't know where we stand as well. So I think it makes sense to make this commitment, and if it comes through, then that's good. If not, then we at least showed a willingness and a support for it on our side. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Vincenzo Brienzia on Middle Street. There may be a way through these car manufacturers that are promoting electric vehicles to get grants to promote the bridges in communities. So you may want to look at that, since we do have electric stations here. There may be a play to get money through them to help ease the cost of building this bridge. That's all.
Hi, Leeann Delp. I'm the West Newbury Emergency Management Agency Director, and as I listened to everyone talk, I realized I would be remiss if I did not get up and address everyone and remind everyone that we live within 10 miles of Seabrook Station, a nuclear power plant. We have to be, regularly be able to demonstrate that we can evacuate the town. Newburyport is also part of the emergency planning zone, as is Amesbury, Salisbury, Newbury, and Merrimack. And since I've lived here in 1986, David Baker is correct, many of the roadways have shut down. I live on Crane Neck Street. I very rarely use Middle Street to get into Newburyport, but I certainly think that it is a road that we need to have access from both ends. 113 is the other large thoroughfare through town. And we have to remember, as much as we want to maintain the rural character of the town, we do need to consider emergency access in and out of town as well. And I would think Newburyport would be very concerned to keep this bridge open or reopen because of the emergency planning zone and access. If we have to evacuate the area, or Newburyport does, that's another way away from, it's another way east or west, depending on which way the wind is blowing and where you live in town.
Preston Rogers, 430 Middle Street. At previous town meetings, comments have been made that the nature of the traffic on Middle Road from Garden Street through the bridge has significantly favored commuter If the estimates of 800 to 1,200, whatever that number is, of cars and vehicles using the Middle Street Bridge are at all accurate, if you think about it, that is a huge number of vehicles. I suspect that a lot of them are going to either the Newburyport Industrial Park or to the train station. The character of the road has changed dramatically. I grew up riding that road on my bicycle when there were very few cars using that bridge. Now you have many families living on the road that have children, that where it becomes a safety issue, because the commuter traffic tends not to abide by the 25 mile an hour speed limit. There are many cars going 35, 40, 45 miles an hour in the vicinity of that bridge. In that, this is such an ultimate huge expenditure, I have decided that I am not in favor of a vehicular bridge, but I'm in favor of a pedestrian bridge. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
One of the, I just wanted to make a point, so the town meeting is informed of a situation in that, under Massachusetts law, Newburyport does bear some responsibility to maintain bridges between municipalities. So the fact that, you know, there might not be as great a support for the town, for the city of Newburyport for it, doesn't diminish their obligation to maintain bridges between towns. And so there is a process, if there's a dispute regarding this, that West Newbury could take advantage of. So the reason I'm making this statement is I just want town meeting to be informed that it isn't just, you know, unilateral on the part of the city of Newburyport to say they don't want to participate. They can be required to participate.
Hello, Madam Moderator. My name is Elizabeth Vangelis, and I live on Chestnut Street. And I just feel like it's important to remember, too, that when we order ambulances in West Newbury, they come from Newburyport. And then when we get mutual aid from fire departments, many times we get help from all surrounding towns. But I don't know if anyone's ever ordered an ambulance and waited for it, but that can be very anxiety-producing. So just a reminder, if you live in that area, and you know how long it takes you to drive from the industrial park in Newburyport, that's how long it's going to take the ambulance to get to you. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I think we're ready to vote. This is putting money into the stabilization fund, so it's a simple majority. Oh, it's from? Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. My mistake. Reading the wrong article. It's Article 16, which does require a two-thirds vote, because it's taking money out of the stabilization fund. Okay, so two-thirds vote, we'll take reverse order. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. Okay, I'm going to have to count this vote. Do we have tellers? Board of Registars?
No, we're on the next one. That already passed.
You guys have me confused.
I think we're on 16.
We're on 16.
Yeah, 15 passed unanimously.
I think we're on the bridge question.
So it's to transfer from available funds. Wendy, what was the motion? To transfer from what?
From the Capital Stabilization Fund.
It's two-thirds.
Yeah, so just count the reds.
Okay. I'm sorry. Now, this is going to be hard work for the Board of Registars. So I would ask everyone to please be patient and keep your cards very visible. All those opposed, please make yourself visible to the counters. In fact, it would be better if you stood up. And stay there until they have passed. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Posey, what have you got? 10. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. 4-1? What did you say? There are 43 people sitting over here. Are there? Oh, oh, okay. We didn't double count anybody, did we? You counted from the black sedan over? And you did all of these? And you planted, and you did the... Okay. Okay, gotcha. 40?
125.
The motion passes 125 in favor, 24 against. Article 17, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $95,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to roof repairs to town buildings, or to take any other action related thereto." What is the recommendation, the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously supports passage of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $95,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to roof repairs to town buildings. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the Capital Stabilization Fund at the close of fiscal year 2023. Discussion. Once again, this requires a two-thirds vote, since it's coming from the Capital Stabilization Fund. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. It's unanimous. Article 18, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $35,000 for the purchase of a Jaws of Life or similar equipment, or take any other action relative thereto." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is unanimous in its support of this article.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $25,000 for the purchase of a Jaws of Life or similar equipment. Any remaining funds will be closed out to the Capital Stabilization Fund at the close of fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Mr. Parker.
Madam Moderator,
Madam Moderator, um, the, uh, the article in the booklet specifies $35,000. The motion was for $25,000. And the reason that the motion is less is because, uh, due to the, uh, the stellar efforts of our fire chief, Dwyer, um, we have gotten a $10,000 grant. So, that's, that's the difference. And, um, we should all be happy for that.
Any further discussion? Once again, it's a two-thirds vote coming from stabilization. All those in favor, please raise your, I'm sorry, all those opposed, please raise your red cards. All those in favor, raise your green cards. It's unanimous.
Madam Moderator? Uh, just to remind you, we won't have, no Finance Committee recommendations until 24.
As we proceed through the next articles, I won't be asking for the recommendation of the Finance Committee since they don't involve any financial, uh, transfers. And so, we'll just skip that part and go straight to the motion. Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to accept as a public way the layout of Cortland Lane as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown more particularly on a plan entitled 'Street Acceptance Plan for Cortland Lane,' dated October 4th, 2004, prepared by Apple Associates, Inc., a copy of which is on file with the Town Clerk's Office, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain the fee simple title to or permanent easement in said roadway for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of West Newbury, including utility purposes and any drainage access, utility, and other easements related thereto." Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept as a public way the layout of Cortland Lane as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown more particularly on a plan entitled 'Street Acceptance Plan for Cortland Lane,' dated October 4th, 2004, prepared by Apple Associates, Inc., a copy of which is on file with the Town Clerk's Office, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain the fee simple title to or a permanent easement in said roseway, roadway, for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of West Newbury, including utility purposes and any drainage, access, utility, and other easements related thereto.
I just have a question. Jean Lambert River Road. I seem to remember sitting in a town meeting where we accepted Cortland Lane, and I know it has a town street sign. So how is this different? And does it concern the little spur that's at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Mr. Parker?
Uh, in a previous town meeting, I think it was 2006, um, we considered the same, the same article essentially, and we approved it. And through some error of omission that, um, I haven't really fully understand, uh, nobody's, I think, fully understands exactly what happened. It was never recorded. Um, and, um, based on state law, the, uh, the deed needs to be recorded within, is it 100 days? 120 days. Obviously, we're a little past 120 days since 2006. So, we need to consider the article again, or, you know, reconsider this same article and, um, and, and vote it and presumably approve it in order for it to be recorded at this point in time. Um, the, um, so that was an answer to that question. The other, the other thing I think is important to point out is, as, uh, Jean Lambert pointed out, the street has a sign that's a town street sign. Um, the, the street has been maintained by the town, um, sort of oblivious to the, you know, through no fault of anybody, as far as I can determine, sort of oblivious to the fact that it was not legally the town's street. We've been maintaining it, um, for the last 13 or 14 years. Uh, going forward, if we don't approve it at this point, we can't maintain it because legally, the town can't maintain, you know, can't perform services on, on privately owned land. And this is currently privately owned land because the deed was not recorded. Um, and, uh, in answer to the last question about the, what was referred to as a spur at the end, there's actually a small L-shaped parcel of land that is technically part of the roadway layout, um, that hooks over and, and connects to the land that we previously voted on, uh, to participate in, um, purchase or acquisition of conservation restrictions on, uh, uh, and, um, so it provides, that L provides access. That, that is, you know, part of the roadway layout and, and, you know, I guess is an integral part of, of the roadway and will provide access to the trail access, to the land, um, or to the conservation restriction land that we previously voted on today.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. No? Where are they?
Way in the back.
Oh, way in the back. Okay, I'm sorry, the eyes have it. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 6 of the Town Bylaws, Animal Bylaw, in order to establish a new disposal of waste section, to establish requirements related to the disposal and removal of dog waste, including the establishment, enforcement of fines for violations, and other related amendments." Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws by amending Section 6 and Section 27 to establish a new disposal of waste bylaw, all as set forth in Appendix D, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, on page 28 of the Finance Committee booklet, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. Is there any discussion?
I live on Tewksbury Lane, and I have a dog. Um, I'm wondering if you would consider amending this article to say that if a person were to bag the waste and then put it on the side of the road to pick it up later, maybe they wouldn't be fined? And I'm also asking the town to consider two things. Um, I'm wondering if the town would consider selling, um, at low cost, fully compostable dog waste bags? Um, I'm concerned about the amount of trash that this, excuse me, plastic waste that this would generate, um, if it went through. And secondly, I'm wondering if, um, I forgot. I'm really nervous. What was my second part? Oh, yeah. Um, if the town would consider having like a, um, dog waste compost station. Thank you.
Uh, excuse me. Are you, was it your intention to offer an amendment?
Yes.
Would you please provide it in writing?
Up here?
Right.
Thank you.
Ms. Archibald.
Madam Moderator, uh, first of all, I have the, the pictures, and you don't want to see them. What prompted me to, uh, put this on the warrant was especially, uh, for example, on town properties, on Mill Pond, uh, uh, the Mill Pond area, uh, walking around the Molton Street Reservoir. Um, the people say that they have the best of intentions. They, uh, they put the waste in the bags and therein lie the bags ad infinitum. Uh, I have pictures of bags two feet from public drinking water supplies. And so, the, the idea, and, um, I think I can speak for the DPW Director, by, by us initiating, having the town be responsible for picking up the waste, we don't, we don't want to get into that business. It, and if you go to a national park, it's pack it in and pack it out. You're, you're responsible for what you bring into Mill Pond, and you should take, you should take it out. Uh, the, the town should not be responsible for picking up, uh, other people's dog waste. So we don't want to create an attractive nuisance of, of having a, a trash can deliberately for that. The other thing is, um, especially around a reservoir, the, the idea that people are leaving dog waste there is, I've confronted people about it and they, they think I'm a, um, they think I'm the attractive nuisance. They, uh, the, the, it's just not, we don't want to get into having to, to collect that. That's going to, the DPW Director will, will attest to the fact of how, how difficult that is, dealing with it, when he had to deal with that in, uh, in the city of Newburyport. So I think people should be responsible, the reason to set up having, why have, why have a penalty at all? Well, at least it's in, in the back of people's minds that, that, well, maybe we shouldn't be doing this. At least if we have an ordinance, it, it's, it creates some incentive to, to not disobey the ordinance. It's going to be very diff- how are we going to, how are we going to find people? How are we going to actually, uh, carry this out? Very difficult because we're not going to have, uh, people aren't going to be seen doing it. They're going to do it surreptitiously. But at least if we have it on the books that, that we're not supposed to be doing that, I think it's a good idea.
Uh, excuse me. I'm, I'm, I'm having to deal with the amendment first because I did, the, the, the lady did offer it in writing. I have to ask you a question. Where did you go? Does this get added to Section 7.4? Of the existing animal bylaw. Okay. Does everyone have a copy of the FINCOM booklet? So we're looking at page 28, the existing animal bylaw. And Section 7.4 involves method of removal. Where did you intend to place this?
I think 7.4 looks good, but I defer to Rick Parker.
Okay, so that's what you want to move? Okay.
Thank you.
So, now, the motion on the floor is a motion to amend, uh, the, the bylaw, the proposed bylaw. If you're looking at Section 7, Disposal of Waste, subsection 7.4, it now reads, "Method of disposal. Disposal shall be accomplished by transporting such feces to a suitable place for displacement, for placement in a designated waste receptacle or other suitable container which is regularly emptied by a refuse collector." The motion to amend suggests that this following sentence be added to that section. If a dog owner bags their dog's waste and puts it on the side of the road with the plan to pick it up later, said person would not be fined. Yes? I'm, I'm just giving you the motion now. There was no opportunity until I put the motion on the floor. Second. Second. Okay, so, did everyone hear that? So it says, "Shall not, would not be fined." Okay? The discussion at this point is on the motion to amend. In other words, to add this sentence. Okay? Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The motion fails. So we're back to the main motion, which is the original language of this, I meant, of this, uh, bylaw.
Thank you. Um, I'm Jennifer Costin. I live on Main Street, and I, this is a laudable goal. I feel the frustration. I walk my dog at Mill Pond every day, and I see the bags. Having said that, I think you can't legislate common sense and respect. So, um, the prior speaker actually touched on this, and I'm curious, a couple of questions. The folks who have promoted this, have you considered all of the ways that we could make it easy to do the right thing? And she raised the question of biodegradable, um, collection bags and potentially a place for, um, composting waste. We've got a lot of trails in the, in the town, and it feels to me that having just a disposal bin in a parking lot is really a deterrent. So, I don't, um, and I also am not clear on how we would possibly implement a fine other than turning all of our residents into whistleblowers. So I don't, I don't favor having, sort of legislating this issue. I would prefer to promote, uh, good citizenship.
I live on Middle Street. I just have a question. Would passing this stop people on Fridays after the trash has been picked up from putting into an empty trash can the waste that they do every Friday at our house? So that we have to take it up and hold it for a week? That's my question.
Does anyone have an answer to this question?
First, I'd like to preference, I don't have a dog and I don't have a horse. I thi- I think this needs to, like, be nixed because what makes West Newbury a beautiful community, one of the things is, it's a horse-friendly community. So now, we legislate, dog poop is the next thing, horse poop? Because that's the next bill that's going to come in front of you guys. Not by me. I'm all for the animals. And how are you supposed to even comment when you pass one and not the other? West Newbury is known for horses, so I'm saying, this bill should just be removed altogether. Thank you.
Um, I love dogs. I love families with dogs, but I think it's their responsibility to be responsible for the waste of their dogs and to figure out ways that they can carry that waste back with them. It's my opinion. Thank you.
Is there any further discuss- excuse me, discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Oh, boy. May I see one more time? Everybody put your cards down. Now, this time, please make the cards really obvious. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 40 of the Town Bylaws by adding Sections 5.5.1 through 5.5.5 in order to establish a revolving fund for revenues and expenses associated with electrical, with electric vehicle charging stations located on town-owned property, including existing stations at 381 Main Street and 694 Main Street, West Newbury, and including any stations as may be installed on town-owned property in the future." 5.5.1, Electric Vehicle Start, Charging Stations Revolving Fund. 5.5.2, Department. There shall be a separate fund called the Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Revolving Fund. 5.5.3, Revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Revolving Fund as a separate account, and credit to the fund all the monies received in connection with use of electrical vehicle charging stations- in connection with use of electric vehicle charging stations located on town-owned property, donations, and any other source. 5.5.4 Purposes and expenditures. During each fiscal year, the town may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Revolving Fund for the operations and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations located on town-owned property in West Newbury. 5.5.5 The Electric Vehicles Charging Stations Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, 2021, and shall continue until such time as town meeting votes to eliminate the fund.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section 40 of the town bylaws by adding Sections 5.5.1 through 5.5.5 in order to establish a revolving fund for revenues and expenses associated with electric vehicle (EV) charging stations located on town-owned property, including existing stations at 381 Main Street and at 694 Main Street, West Newbury. All is set forth in Article 21 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 22. To see if the town will vote to amend Section 40 of the town bylaws by adding Sections 5.6.1 through 5.6.5 in order to establish a revolving fund for revenues and expenses associated with curbside collection of trash, recycling, and food waste. 5.6.1 Curbside Collection of Trash, Recycling, and Food Waste Revolving Fund. 5.6.2 Department. There shall be a separate fund called the Curbside Collection of Trash, Recycling, and Food Waste Revolving Fund. 5.6.3 Revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Curbside Collection of Trash, Recycling, and Food Waste Revolving Fund as a separate account, and credit to the fund all the monies received in connection with fees charged for trash or recycling carts, trash stickers, and bulk item stickers, donations, and any other sources. 5.6.4 Purposes and expenditures. During each fiscal year, the town may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Curbside Collection of Trash, Recycling, and Food Waste Revolving Fund for the payment of expenses for trash or recycling carts and stickers and related expenses. 5.6.5 Fiscal Years. The Curbside Collection of Trash, Recycling, and Food Waste Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1, 2021, and shall continue until such time as town meeting votes to eliminate the fund.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section 40 of the town bylaws by adding Sections 5.6.1 through 5.6.5 in order to establish a revolving fund for revenues and expenses associated with curbside collection of trash, recycling, and food waste. All is set forth in Article 22 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Are you raising your red card? The eyes have it. Article 23. To see if the town will vote to limit the total amount that may be expended from each revolving fund established pursuant to Section 40 of the bylaws of the town of West Newbury to wit. Section 5.1 Summer Recreation Revolving Fund, $44,350. Section 5.2 G.A.R. Library Fines and Penalties Revolving Fund, $10,000. Section 5.3 Police Vehicle Revolving Fund, $20,000. Section 5.4 Pipe Stave Mill Pond Care and Maintenance Revolving Fund, $5,000. Section 5.5 Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Revolving Fund, $10,000. Section 5.6 Curbside Collection of Trash, Recycling, and Food Waste Revolving Fund, $150,000.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to limit the total amount that may be expended from each revolving fund in Section 40 of the town bylaws, as set forth in Article 23 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to delay any additional expenditures on the Soldiers and Sailors Memorial Building (Car Post) project until a defined productive use for this building is identified and approved. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee is unanimously opposed to the passage of this article.
No, you're not.
It's a citizen's petition.
Oh, okay.
Madam Moderator, I'm Walt Burmeister, 8 River Crest Drive. I move that the town vote to delay any additional expenditure on the Soldiers and Sailors Memorial Building (Car Post) project until a defined productive use for this building is identified and approved by the Select Board.
Is there discussion?
Madam Moderator, what are you going to do with the building? That question has been asked repeatedly since the Legion members voted to gift the building to the town. The only request the members of the Legion had at that time, and the Board of Select agreed to, was that any legitimate veterans group be allowed to use that building for a nominal fee. The argument that the building has no defined use is a valid one. It is not the only town building that has no defined use. The existing town hall, which we just appropriated $104,000 for, has no defined use. There was a preschool in the former select, or town clerk's office in the way of the building. The main hall itself has been used for book sales, Memorial Day, and other events. It has no defined use. The annex right over here has been used for town meetings, voting, flu clinics, and many other events, but it also has no defined use. I doubt that the building will have a single use. One possible use for that may be a meeting and storage area for the trustees of the four cemeteries and all their grave information and contact information in one location. I personally would like to see the building used for its original intended purpose, a memorial, not just to the Civil War veterans, but to all men and women in the town of West Newbury who served our nation. The library has at least 10 boxes of materials dating from the War of 1812 and the Civil War. This needs to be preserved and displayed for people to enjoy. All the materials that were taken out of the Legion post when it was closed are stored in the 1910 building. All of this relates to the World War I, World War II, and Korea. As the Veterans Grave Registration Officer for three of the four cemeteries in town, I have service and death information on over 850 individuals, ranging from the Revolutionary War to Afghanistan. We must remember and honor these men and women, not just with parades, speeches, flags, or engravings, but also as a place where their names and deeds can be seen and appreciated by all.
There's a line. Just get in the line. Oh, okay. You don't have, I'm sorry. You don't have to ask to be recognized. If you're in the line, you can just come up when you're next.
Thank you. I was aware of this petition, but I just read it for the first time. And it really isn't about a defined use. It apparently is about a productive fine use. And I'm just wondering if we could have a legal definition of what that verb is, what that means? Does it have to recover the $1.6 million? Does it need to be a revenue-producing entity? That's just a question. I do have comments, but I'm just wondering if that can be clarified.
I'd have to ask the mover. Can you clarify, does this have to be a revenue-producing
That wording originated with the Finance Committee initially. So whatever their definition was for productive use, I would defer to them.
So, Madam Moderator, may I continue my comments?
Well, do you want to try to get an answer from the Finance Committee?
My sense is it's very subjective. My sense is it's going to be a potential word that is going to cause legal action.
Okay, well, that's fine. If you want to just leave it at that, if someone from the Finance Committee wishes to rebut that, that's fine. You can go on with your comments.
Thank you very much. So, there has, in fact, as we all know, this is the third of the four town meetings where this building has been discussed. Apparently, there is a small minority that wants to stop this building. And to say productive use, I'm afraid is a poison pill that will never be satisfied. In fact, we have, there have been discussions about use of this building by several different community interests. And there were discussions going on right after this thing passed 19 months ago. But you know what happened? We've been under a state of emergency for all but four of those months. So none of those discussions continued, because it takes community stakeholders to decide what we want to do with a community building. And we couldn't have those discussions. So this is effectively four months after two-thirds of the town voted to approve this building. Effectively four months later, now the minority is coming back and saying, "We want you to define a productive use," even though we told them right up front, "We're going to work on it." And that's what we're doing. And there's been a lot of misconceptions and statements about this. For instance, the building won't, you know, return its capital investment. And that's why it really makes me wonder about this word productive. Well, this money is community preservation funds. It's not meant to return on capital investment. Do we have a capital investment return calculated for the land we just bought? No. We don't have to have a capital investment on this. And people have said, "Oh, there's so many other expenses we should be spending it on. Paid school and the water infrastructure." Those are not allowable uses for this money. This money is not meant for capital investment. It's meant for open space. It's meant for historical preservation. It is meant for affordable housing. And there's been, you know, talk about, you know, "Oh, there's not enough parking for this building." Well, to my knowledge, I believe there's eight spots available. And I believe that there's talk about being able to work with the landlord to make it next door, budding, to make it 12. And guess what? The post office in town, six parking spots. The library, 12 parking spots. There's probably more parking at this building than there are in the churches right now. And the comment, I've heard, that this is only one by one vote last time. And frankly, Madam Moderator, I respect your judgment. I don't always agree with you. But there has been insinuation that that vote was not proper. And I frankly am appalled by that. That vote, by one vote, was one vote to achieve two-thirds of the town meeting. That was a super majority. One less vote, and we would not have bonded the money. But that still would have been an overwhelming support. And back to bonding the money, we did it the hard way. We could have gotten and spent $1.5 million of the preservation money with a simple majority vote. And that would have emptied the account. We wouldn't have had money for open space or potentially affordable housing. Instead, we put a down payment, and we financed. And with these low rates, as we've just learned, we just saved $60,000 on the high school, because the interest rates are so low. Financing is the way to go. And that's what we did. 20 easy payments, roughly of $85,000, plus a $400,000. Madam Moderator, I'm giving more information. I'm not going around and around here.
No, no, but you, we do have a two-minute limit.
I have more information I need to share.
You have exceeded the limit of...
Madam Moderator?
Mark.
We can afford open space. We can afford affordable housing. In this project, there is money. Don't let people tell you otherwise. And please, I hope the same two-thirds people who were here 15 months ago are still here and support this project. Thank you.
I'm Alisa Grammer from Coffin Street, and I want to commend Bob Janes and Mr. Bo for working forward to find uses and to make this building meaningful, given the situation we're in now. I do have three questions. First question is, I admired enormously the work with the playground, building stakeholder support. We've heard from people who seem to have ideas about. I have looked on the website to get the building plans and could not find them anywhere. And I have been unable to find reports except for reports to the Select Board meetings. So my first question is, has there been any stakeholder input in whatever the design is? My second question is, what assurances do we have, since there seem to be ideas about use, that we won't be remodeling this building after we've done whatever we've done? And my third question is, given the amazing increase, thanks to COVID and other things, of construction materials, is this the time, has the town penciled out the cost ramifications of going forward right now? Those are my three questions, and I will depart unless somebody has questions about the question or something.
My name is Jean Pucci. I live on Stewart Street in West Newbury. In the 26 years I've been in town, I have never been inside the car building. I hear it's very small. I appreciate the servicemen, the memorial attributes to it. However, I do have a problem about allocating such a large sum of money to a building that is just going to be a memorial, basically. I disagree with some of the comments about other buildings in towns not having use. I've been in the annex like millions of times with group meetings. The old town hall is being used right now for book sale, and we use, we do book sales annually there, and book drops. I'm sorry, it's a book drop today. And so I think that, and that's in awful shape. You know, someday we're going to have to address that concern. But I think this is, what is it, 1.8 million with some CPA funds? I think it's, you know, I think we ought to just pause here and think about this a little more. I went to that town meeting the last time. I wasn't prepared for that discussion. And it was hand-raising, and it was very close, I thought. So I would like to propose this time that we have a written, that we have a hand ballot, so we can count the votes. We have some kind of accountability for the vote, because it may be very close. And this hand thing, I don't know. But anyway, I know the taxes are going to go up, because we have wonderful things happening in town, like a new high school, junior high, and land acquisitions, which I am totally for. I love this town. I have supported probably everything, except this car building, which I think is a bit much, considering we're in the 21st century. We have to think about water and climate and those sort of emergency needs. So I think we should step back from this and reconsider how it can best be used. And once it's repaired and so forth, you're going to have to annually maintain it. So it's not an easy thing. But anyway, that's my view. Thank you. Thank you.
When the time is right, I'm happy to speak to Elisa's questions.
The highest form of sacrifice is that veterans do give us. They put their lives on the line. To move this a little bit quicker, I'd like to make amendment that we use this for veteran housing. So, that's what I'd like to do, put a written amendment in now, and let's vote on it, see where it goes.
So, you wish to amend the motion on the floor that says, don't use any more money?
No, I wish that we at least have a vote. I'm saying veteran housing, and to have a vote on that and see if that would pass with the people.
The concept on having people vote on a specific use for this building at this meeting is really not covered by this article. The article says, don't spend any more money. It doesn't say, pick your favorite use or whatever. It says, don't spend any more money. So, you know, coming up with uses right now on the floor of town meeting, and then picking one is definitely not in the purview of this article.
So, maybe we can have a special meeting for that so that the people would...
You can talk to the Selectmen about that and, you know, see if there's a possibility. Or you could also possibly talk to the Conservation Commission and see if they would be willing to host such a dialogue. This isn't the place to do it.
Well, I didn't know. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, thank you for all your preparation today, and thanks to all the folks that put this together at dawn, I understand, or before, so.
After the rain.
Maybe it was a little later than that. I'm going to eliminate a lot of the information that's been given already and just say that with the coming of a town manager, we entered a phase of what was called housekeeping. And that means that our ability to do more things clearly and quickly as needed and so on was going to be reached at the fastest and most accurate way we've done in a long time. So, the money issues, I think, considering all of the backup from finance and so on, that's not my first concern. But I will say, to answer a question about the, if the building was going to raise money and so on, and the budget for, or the report for fiscal year 2019 reads, workers worked with the Carr Post, building committee, building committee, and in the late 2018 period, a group of citizens organized around the preparation of a proposal for building restoration. And this was a statement from the Selectmen to say what they were doing about the Carr Post. So, now, I'm just going to get real quickly to the gist of how important is a memorial and so on. So, I went up to the training field yesterday. I counted almost 400 names of people from West Newbury who had passed in the wars that we're aware of. In the magazine I got the other day, it says that the United States since the Revolutionary War has been involved in at least 29 wars and conflicts, with 70 million women and men serving, 1,152,000 killed, and 1,400,000 wounded. That's the war part of what I have to say. To tear the building down because you have an option, one or the other, and so you choose tear down, with a background like that, it tells me that, I wish there had been more of that. Now, the peace part. On Memorial Day, the Legion goes around town and does various things. And when we get back to the Carr Post, we, as the acting chaplain, I make remarks every year, and they say around the fact something JFK said years ago, that we've got to deal with poverty, we have to deal with hunger and so on. But the scourge that we have to deal with is war. And at the Carr Post, we don't let that go by. We are now waving the flag and saying, you know, bring on the next war. We're talking about the last one needs to be the last one. And when the kids go by in the school buses, if that building has been taken down by a wrecking ball, I have to say that it's going to, to some degree, even if it's just by one thought that one kid has, if that building is gone, it's going to lessen the impact of what it all means. So, I would ask you, I would say if I looked at all the buildings in town, I would say that there is no building that is more precious to us than that building. Thank you.
So, I won't address the value of the building. Two-thirds of previous town meeting already approved it and thought it was worthwhile. What I will address is this particular motion. I find that it's fatally flawed in that it requires a definition of use. And as we all know, in the 1950s, maybe people couldn't conceive of certain things that are happening today. Who's going to approve a Zoom meeting to be held in the Soldiers and Sailors Home back in the 50s that didn't even exist? So, I think that there are lots of potential uses, and I think if this passes, it will require a town meeting to make amendments to the use on a regular basis, and I think that's counterproductive.
This motion doesn't say tear the building down. This motion says, find something that we're going to use the building for and renovate it with that purpose in mind. I think it's foolish to spend a lot of money on the building not knowing what we're going to use it for, and then possibly having to go back and re-renovate. So, what I'm saying is, let's just take a little bit of time, figure out how we're going to use the building, and then let's spend over $2 million. Thank you.
Steepswallow River Road, at the fall 2019 meeting, this money was appropriated, and that's over. This article, Madam Moderator, if you see a way that this article can supersede that, I'd like to know what it is. We now have charged the Selectmen to renovate this building. There's nothing in this article that changes that, and I think I should have spoken first because I think most of the discussion, although good, was irrelevant.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Parker?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, or at least I can clarify them. There was one point somebody made is they referenced a tax increase as a result of this. In fact, this is coming, plan to come out of community preservation funds over the course of a couple of decades, and that's already built in, you know, unless we were to decide not to continue with CPA, which we've already considered twice before. You know, there is no tax increase associated with this, and, you know, I don't say that as a for or against, it's just a matter of fact. And the other number I would question was a number that's been said in excess of $2 million, and I don't really think that's a valid number. That's trying to build in operating costs that, you know, have been projected and adding those on to, you know, the estimated reconstruction or renovation cost. So, I personally would take that number of greater than $2 million with a couple of grains of salt.
Do you want to speak? Okay. In my list of town employees who are not residents, I neglected our town manager, who has some information pertinent to some of the questions that were asked. Is there any objection to his addressing the town?
No.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Angus Jennings, Town Manager. I just wanted to speak briefly. Ms. Grammer had raised a couple of questions. I just wanted to share the information that we have. She had asked about stakeholder input on the building plans. The building design has been ongoing because the way the article was approved in November 2019 appropriated upfront 250,000 and authorized borrowing for the rest, so that initial balance much more than covers the design costs. So, that's been well underway. There have been a couple of iterations of design plans that have been shared at Select Board meetings. We will get those posted to the town website. We had a walkthrough just a couple of weeks ago with a kind of design set. There were a couple of very minor changes, and the architect was waiting to get some things from her subcontractors. So, I don't have the final, final plans, so I didn't put those on the site. But they went through the planning board process, and it's substantially as everyone saw. It's just, it's a couple of minor design details and some landscaping elements that came out of the planning board's site plan review process. So, part of the planning board process did include public hearings with a butter notification, and that process went very smoothly. And at the end, people, including the Director Butter, was very pleased with the design. And I'm not saying that for or against, just a statement of fact. But we will post those plans to the town website. In terms of the question about assurances of no renovation or change in the event of a defined use being pinned down, the uses that the architect was given was first-floor assembly, second-floor office, and it's basically pretty, not to sound generic, I don't mean that in a bad way, but it's general, it's not, there's not specific design elements of the architecture that would need to be changed. So, whether it's meeting space, whether in the future it ends up being something similar to that, you know, it's basically first-floor assembly, second-floor office, something like residential that was taken off the table early, that would be an entirely different set of design, and there would be issues because there's not septic, it's a tight tank, but that's a different discussion. But I guess in response to Ms. Grammer's question, the design was intentionally set to accommodate different types of uses in that general category of assembly and upper second-floor office. And finally, on the anticipated costs, right now, we've gotten full permitting. The architect is just getting the final construction documents and the bid specifications from her subcontractors. So, we do expect to put the project out to bid in June with the expectation we would receive bids in July and potentially award a construction contract in August, obviously depending on what happens here today. But if the bids come in significantly above budget, that clearly would be on a Select Board meeting, and it would present the board with some difficult questions. And if they did come in above budget, you know, it is going to cause some rethinking of what to do. At that point, the board would have the option to potentially come back to a future town meeting to seek more funds. I don't want to speak for the board, but I don't think that would be a foregone conclusion. I think that the budget that was set is already a lot of money. They could look at value engineering. If it's a bit above budget, they may trim things and still get it within budget. But we don't know what the construction bids will be until we get them, and that's expected to happen this summer.
Is there any further discussion? No. Okay. This is a simple majority. All those in favor of this motion, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion fails. Move to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're adjourned.